This one's right at you.
Right through.
Knock on the door and tell them we're ready.
I think they're ready.
Please.
They're ready? Go ahead.
Good. Okay, welcome everybody to the April 11th, 2018 Scarborough Town Council Workshop on Tax Increment Financing. And we have Attorney Sean Mueller here, who will start off the presentation. And do you want to do any introduction, Tom?
Yeah, just a quick by way of introduction. This council had a presentation, a workshop actually, with the developers of Scarborough Downs. As part of that conversation, they kind of foreshadowed the fact that they will likely come forward with a request for some tax assistance through the tax increment financing deal. Those conversations have just begun, so I think we're weeks, if not months, away from that being brought forward. But it made sense, because this is really kind of a complicated area, to spend some time outside of the pressures of an actual proposal to understand what these are all about. And hopefully we'll lay a good foundation for when and if that proposal comes forward. So tonight we have Sean Cook Mueller from Berndsted Shore, who's really one of the statewide experts on TIFs. We're lucky enough to have her part of the municipal law team, Berndsted Shore at our disposal. Karen Martin obviously is our local expert on the subject as well. So we'd like to walk you through a presentation. I think our goal would this, for this to be interactive as possible. So feel free to ask questions as we go. I think you may have many as we go forward, and to ask you to hold them all to the end is probably too much. So please interject, ask a question as we go forward. So that's our goal for this evening. And I do appreciate the early start. We just want to make sure we give this topic proper time for discussion. So Sean, you want to start?
Great, sure, sure. Nice to see everybody. I think I know most everybody at this point, but for those who may not remember, as Berndsted Shore represents a town of Scarborough, we have some people who are specialists in certain areas of law. So my primary role here in Scarborough is working on your public finance bond issues and then, as needed, tax increment financing. And I represent municipalities all over the state on tax increment financing. I probably have at least eight to 10 projects, whether they're amendments or TIF districts or ongoing issues with TIF districts going at any one time. So I definitely have a lot of experience in this over the last decade. And I'm giving these kinds of presentations, sort of the TIF 101 presentations, to communities all the time because it is not common that a municipality is always in a TIF. You know, you're not thinking about it all the time. It comes up periodically. And so for elected officials especially to kind of really get into the weeds and understand the policy potential of this program, it's useful to go through this exercise. So certainly as Tom said, interrupt me with questions as we go to make this as useful as possible. So to get started, I'm just going to describe what we're planning to cover. So what is a TIF district and how do they work at the pretty basic level? Number two, we'll talk about types of districts, because there are varying types. Number three, we'll talk about credit enhancement agreements and what the difference is between a TIF district and a credit enhancement agreement. Number four, we'll talk about how TIF revenues, once they're generated in a TIF district, are permitted to be spent. You know, what can we fund with TIF revenues? Number five, we'll talk about the tax shift benefit, which is a feature of main law in tax increment financing that impacts the municipality's financial incentive to create TIF districts. And then number six, Karen will get up and talk about the existing TIF districts of town of Scarborough. Okay, so number one is what is a TIF district? This is pretty sort of broad level explanation here, but it's an economic development tool that allows municipalities to capture new property tax value. So it's created, it's a function of state statute, but it's really an authorization to municipalities to create and designate TIF districts and develop their own programs to administer those. There is a state review process, but it's really meant to be a municipalities program that's enabled by state law. So how they work is you set a geographic boundary around some area in the municipality. And we can talk about this later, but they don't actually have to be contiguous. You can have one TIF district that is property here and property there. Once you set that geographic boundary, it essentially freezes the assessed value in that boundary. And any property taxes paid on increased assessed value in that area goes into what's called a development program fund or your TIF fund where your TIF revenues are kept. And those TIF revenues can only be spent on certain approved project costs, as they're called. And those are defined in statute. We'll get to the description of what those are, but they're meant to be investments in economic development as this is an economic development tool. The districts can, yes.
Sorry, can I just restate, just because I'm trying to follow. The, so you're saying you freeze the assessed value at a certain point in time? And then any growth in that assessed value, the tax revenue that would otherwise be paid goes into a fund?
That's right.
Or the tax revenue paid by the, by the property owner then goes into a special reserve fund?
That's right, yes. So at the time that a TIF district is established, there's already an assessed value, whether or not there's a building, right? There's, at least there's land value there, although there is an exception to that rule. But for the most part, TIF districts have, all have an original assessed value that is something more than zero. So for the term of the TIF district and beyond, at least the tax revenue on that existing value will continue to go to the general fund. The exception to that is when you have property that's exempt from taxation, like a 501(c)(3) organization that qualifies or town-owned property that then gets sold. So there are TIF districts with zero OAVs for that purpose. And just as a function of, of the definitions section of the statute that defines original assessed value as the assessed value, the taxable assessed value as of a certain date, zero can be the OAV, the original assessed value. So along with designating the actual physical boundaries of a TIF district, when a district is designated, a development program document needs to be drafted and adopted by the legislative body of the community. And that's where you talk about your goals for the program, what you intend to do with the TIF revenue, and we'll get into some of those options as well. I mentioned before that applications after they are approved, after your district, TIF district is designated by the local government and the development program is adopted, then the application before it's actually a district, an operational district. It needs to be approved at the state level. Their review is just for statutory compliance. So they're not going to say this is a good idea or a bad idea. They're looking at it compared to the statute. Did you follow the process? Are the projects listed in the statute? And there are two types of TIF districts. Economic Development TIF districts are reviewed by the main state, by the main Department of Economic and Community Development. And then there is a separate statute that governs housing, affordable housing TIFs, which you all have more recent experience with those types of TIFs here. And those are reviewed by the main state housing authority. And DECD does not have involvement with those. I like to use this graphic when we're just sort of talking about how these things work. You can see that the green bar represents the base value or what the statute calls original assessed value. So this assumes that that property had $1 million of assessed value at the time the district was created. And then the white box, new $5 million of value. That is what we call sheltered or captured in the TIF district. And so the taxes paid on the $5 million of increased assessed value is what goes into the TIF fund and can only be used on project costs that are outlined in your development program document. Then the TIF ends at the end of, in this case, this example says 30 years. That's the maximum term of years any TIF district can last. At that time, all $6 million of assessed value goes on to the general fund tax rolls.
How do you recognize the end value? Is it an arbitrary number that we assign? Like say we, if it's that $6 million, how do you know in 30 years it's going to be worth $6 million?
You don't. So it's just whatever the assessed value is as determined by your assessor at any given year, really.
I got you, okay.
So you're really setting up just the structure. And then whatever actually happens on the property is going to dictate how much TIF revenue is generated and then therefore at the end of the district, how much general fund of revenue, or revenue is.
So all the improvements over time go through the normal assessor department analysis. A value is associated with that. A tax rate is then applied, and that generates a certain revenue stream that goes, is sheltered for the length of the term.
That's right, yes. So the regular tax assessment and even the tax collection is the same as it would be for anyone else and whether they're in a TIF district or not. It's really what happens to the tax revenue when it comes into the municipality. So, yeah.
Just a final point. In the first instance, though, there is modeling and assumptions made in terms of what do we expect, how will this perform over time? There's been some challenges in some of our local examples. They've underperformed based on a number of factors, external factors. There's all sorts of things that might affect performance over time. But in the first instance, you'll see performance based on expectations. This is what we think the value will be and when it will be realized. Is there any, so let's assume we say a million now, in 30 years it's less than a million. Worst case scenario, do we have any rebate requirements or anything like that? Or they're just going to, that's the, they're going to be paying that minimal $1 million no matter what? If it goes below that, that's just what they're charged?
No, so the taxpayer will pay property tax on whatever the assessed value is. So if it turns out that over time the property actually loses value, they'll only be obligated to pay tax on $900,000 or whatever the assessed value is. And I hate to do this, but the city of Stanford has a TIF district that was put in place that has lost value just by timing in the marketplace. It's an area-wide district that encompasses a lot of property, but it's lost value over time. So it does happen, but you know, it's very, very uncommon.
But one important piece is that no matter what, we're reimbursing only what, what is being paid in. In other words, we're not paying forward on, we're not paying more than somebody is paying in. And if our estimates are off, that's the risk of the developer, they've made that investment.
Right.
And risk for us if we've made the investment.
But again, it's the normal process. The assessor assesses like they do any other property. We issue tax bills like we do in any property. The taxpayer actually pays their bill. Depending on the arrangement, we may reimburse a portion back, but it happens just like any other property.
If, if the green area is assessed as $1 million at the beginning of the project and in 20 years you have all sorts of nice improvements made, then the land value is going to likely go up.
Correct.
Does that $1 million stays stable? Or does it simply float with whatever the assessed value attributed to it?
It's the assessed value as of a certain date. So it'll be a historical, it'll be a number.
So it's an historical number, right?
Correct.
You set it and then forget it.
Right. If that million, if that piece of land that was worth $1 million in 2018 and you start a TIF and it's suddenly worth, because you've added infrastructure, you've added other improvements, the value of the land may indeed go up, but that can be captured value. It's still based on the $1 million.
Anything above the original assessed value is sheltered or captured.
And there's one exception to that rule also.
This is why we have an attorney.
Well, this is the kind of thing that you, that now we have the benefit of other people's experiences. But when a municipality undergoes a revaluation, that can result in what some might call sort of artificial increased assessed value on a particular property. And so in some cases, municipalities have reserved the right to, when they've undergone a revaluation, make some kind of adjustment to the way in which they're measuring their captured value. So they don't all of a sudden in a TIF district, capture a bunch of what's sort of like, just due to a revaluation, increased assessed value.
Do the municipalities negotiate with the developer for what the base value of the project will be?
There's no negotiation about what the base value of the property would be because that's a defined term. It's the assessed value of the property as of a certain date.
So it's whatever it's on the assessor's book says?
But if you are in fact negotiating a credit enhancement agreement with a developer where some portion of TIF revenue is reimbursed to the developer, you can negotiate that there's only reimbursement after they hit additional higher threshold. That contract, there's a lot of flexibility in how that's structured. You can, that original assessed value for purposes of determining what the town can capture is a defined term in the statute.
Can you just, for, I guess maybe my benefit obviously, can you define what you mean by sheltered value?
Yeah, so we'll kind of get to that later. I like, I like having, the word probably should say captured because that's really what we're talking about right now. We're going to talk about sheltered revenue later and what that means with the tax shift benefit issue. Yes?
Yeah, the question, and Tom, you might want to chime in. So since this kind of addresses the intervals in between the start and the end of the TIF, if I remember correctly, the developer can renegotiate the contract for the TIF if projections along the way do not meet the original projections. We had one of those, I think, in Scarborough ones.
In fact, two of the existing ones have been renegotiated largely because they didn't perform.
And therefore the TIF could actually extend that beyond the original 30 years.
Not, not beyond 30 years.
Oh, can't.
A lot of TIF districts are set to start, to terminate like 20 years or 15 years and the town doesn't pick 30 years as the original term of years. So in some cases, you can always renegotiate a credit enhancement agreement. So if the developers come in and ask for an adjustment, that can, an extension of time can be part.
Was it the property across from Cabela's where the new development school, that was one of those? What was the other?
The other one was Enterprise Business Park.
Enterprise, okay.
And Karen will talk about those specific examples later too.
Thank you.
Okay, so this slide is meant to talk a little bit in general terms about what are the potential benefits that municipalities can receive from this program, using this program in a strategic way. One is assisting the achieving economic development goals of a comprehensive plan or other planning or vision documents. So a lot of the approved project costs that are available for use under the TIF statute and can be funded with TIF revenues can allow you to realize some of those goals. A lot of it's investment in infrastructure. But other, other types of things grow in your economic development programming. The second one is attracting new investment. So attracting jobs, improving the local economy. I think this is really about making sure that in certain circumstances, if a developer comes and requests a credit enhancement agreement, there may be opportunities to, to really promote the economy through the use of a credit enhancement agreement. This goal can also be achieved by the investments in your economic development programming on the municipality side. And then the third is accomplishing significant infrastructure projects. There is often a sort of obstacle for developers and development that there is significant infrastructure improvements that are necessary. And so as a result, infrastructure is often an approved project cost in development programs. So if you already have a goal of making some significant infrastructure improvement, this can be a way to achieve that goal. And then the tax shift benefit is another component, which I will get to. I put it at the end because I think it's not quite as important in Scarborough.
It will be, I was going to say that. Because Scarborough, we're already a minimum receiver, so there's no shift benefit, so.
Yeah, there's a small one. And potentially if it isn't always the case that you're a minimum receiver, it may be quite significant. So, and yeah, the reasonable minds may differ about, about whether that's likely, so, yes.
Yeah, just a quick question, and you'll probably get it to that. When it says accomplish significant infrastructure projects, does that mean that money, that sheltered revenue, has to be used inside that specific TIF and for that specific project? So you're really, the developer is paying tax dollars in, but you're giving the tax dollars back to them so they can develop a project?
That is one possibility.
Could use it for other things?
And we will get to the categories. There is more flexibility than, than you explained there. But, but sort of the purest example of a TIF is you need a, you need infrastructure so that that project can get built. It's in the district. And so you use TIF revenues whether the municipality undertakes the infrastructure project or the developer does and you're reimbursing them through the credit enhancement agreement. In whatever way you do it, the infrastructure project and the cost of that is what the TIF revenues are being used to.
So the simple classic example is a development, a vacant piece of land exists and you need public sewer on the property to develop it significantly. And the cost is exorbitant, it's a mile away. So there's any number of ways. Town undertake it, we direct monies through the development program to pay the debt service, or the developer undertakes it and we reimburse for that cost. That's kind of the simple classic example. There's all sorts of variations beyond that. But that's, that's really the simplest one for an infrastructure project.
And the reason we would want, we may want to do that on occasion is if that investment actually opens up additional land beyond that one specific project too.
Or even along that sewer line that ends at a point, this big vacant parcel, but it enables other parcels in between to be developed. So they're really case by case in terms of the value and benefit.
So there are some statutory limits to TIF districts that are worth being aware of. You do need in any TIF district to meet the requirement that at least 25% of the area has to be either blighted in need of rehabilitation, redevelopment, or conservation, or it must be suitable for commercial or arts district uses. Usually there is no problem with meeting this criteria because at least 25% and usually much more of a TIF district is suitable for commercial purposes, which is usually there's commercial development expected or possible there. There are caps on the amount of acreage in your municipality that you can put into a single TIF district or in all your TIF districts. It's 2% for every single TIF district is the limit, 2% of your total town acreage. And it's a total of 5% in all TIF districts. However, those caps do not apply to a couple of different various types of districts, so we'll talk about that. The other cap is called the valuation cap. That one relates to the original assessed value of a TIF district. The total of all the original assessed values of all your town's TIF districts can't be more than 5% of the total amount of value in the municipality. That is also not usually a concern because usually TIF districts have a low starting value. And like I said, there are a couple of exceptions that, that help us out there. But it's good to just be aware of that. And then we've discussed the term limit, which is 30 years for any single TIF district.
I don't anticipate an issue with either the acreage or the value cap given what I expect will be the proposal. Even if it encompasses the entire property, I guess, I don't expect it will be a barrier in either regard.
Other relevant components of the statute that governs the process, if you're going to either amend a TIF district or put in place a new TIF district, there's a public hearing requirement and there's a 10-day public hearing notice ahead of that. A lot of municipalities don't find the statutory requirements on the public process to be quite enough for what they like. They're quite often public information sessions or something else that leads up to the public hearing also just so people have greater awareness. And they often are doing something like this also leading up to a district designation. But according to the statute, you're only, you're required to do a public notice, public hearing, and then a vote of the legislative body. In this case, of course, that's the town council. And you're voting to designate the district and adopt the development program for the district or amend it if that's what you're doing in that particular case. You can have the public hearing and the vote on a district in the same evening. There's no prohibition on, on that. And then following that process, the full application goes to the Department of Economic and Community Development or to Director of Main Housing, if it's a housing, affordable housing TIF district.
Development program is what they call the principal document that describes the TIF?
That's right, yes. And the statute prescribes various components of that document. So some of it is not so wonderfully user-friendly for the local government, frankly. I get that question a fair bit once you see a draft of these things because we have to include some components. One of the things that we have to include is a set of projections of TIF revenue and the tax benefit, which we'll talk further about. And that, that can be useful information, of course, but it also needs to be qualified properly because we don't have a crystal ball. I've talked a little bit about this, but the affordable housing TIF districts go to the main state housing authority for their review. Economic Development TIF districts go to the Department of Economic and Community Development. They're very similar statutes, but they also differ in important ways in terms of how TIF revenues can be spent. And the way I, for practical purposes, affordable housing TIF districts are almost always focused on a particular project. Economic Development TIFs are much more flexible and I think that's where you can try and achieve some broader policy goals beyond, beyond the particular project here. And then I wanted to talk about a couple of different types of economic development TIF districts. We mentioned it before, but the, these top two, the downtown TIF and transit-oriented TIF, those types of districts are exempt from the acreage cap and the value cap. And part of the reason is because those districts are quite likely to be large in acreage and also in value. A downtown TIF district, there are special requirements in order to be categorized that way. In addition to the development program document that a municipality is required to have for all TIF districts, a downtown TIF district is required to have a downtown redevelopment planning document that the municipality has adopted, and that also needs to be submitted with the application for the district. And the idea here is to ensure that, you know, you've really got a cohesive, comprehensive plan because this is such a large area of the municipality. At least that's the intention. You also need to define your district boundary to actually meet the definition of downtown, which I've put on the slide there. The traditional business, central business district of a community that has served as the center of socioeconomic interaction in the community, characterized by a cohesive core of commercial and mixed-use buildings, often interspersed with civic, religious, and residential buildings and public spaces that are typically arranged along a main street and intersecting side streets and served by public infrastructure. So there's a lot of words there, but there is some limit to how broadly you can define that. But that does something, keep in mind, yes?
You have it in the past tense, it says "has served as the center of the town." Would that eliminate Scarborough Downs because it has not served as the center of the town?
I'll take that. It depends on how it's, how, how the district is drawn. Right. So if you were going to make, if you were going to include part or all of Scarborough Downs in a traditional downtown TIF, you would have to, at a minimum, grab the municipal campus and other areas of Okeo. And I think given the walkability, you know, there certainly are, there's a case to be made for that.
Thank you.
And then transit-oriented TIF districts are relatively recent addition to the TIF statute. The concept that brought that into the statute is that transit and economic development are sort of inextricably linked and so that there should be some acknowledgement in our economic development tool to, to that concept. And so there is greater flexibility to fund transit activities, newer expanded transit programs and services out of TIF revenues for transit-oriented TIF districts. You can also combine a downtown and a transit-oriented TIF. So if there are things that you want to, newer expanded transit services you want to fund out of a TIF district, then we should think about combining them and calling the district a transit-oriented district as well as a downtown district, but they can also stand alone. And then the last type that I've identified here is not a term you'll find in the statute, but DECD has sort of coined this term themselves. but DECD has sort of coined this term themselves. And it's meant, omnibus Tiff districts are meant to describe a scenario where you've got multiple lots or multiple parcels in the same district where you want to measure the increased assessed value, the captured assessed value by lot, independent, rather than take the original assessed value for the whole property and then the current assessed value of the whole property. This facilitates individual credit enhancement agreements with parts, with different parcels in the same district. So do you have a question about this?
Yeah, is that, is that determined by the tax map, or can we identify his own? Because part of, part of Scarborough Downs is going to be done, I guess, in pods, if you will, in different sections. So would that apply to doing, is a requirement that has to be a tax map, or what determines the individual parcel size?
Well, so the omnibus Tiff district as a concept is something we would just pick if we wanted it to be measured that way or not. You can also draw a Tiff district boundary to include parts of lots. You don't need to include a whole tax parcel. It's usually, your assessor would want you to pick a whole parcel, but there are occasions where that's just not optimal for some reason, or possible if the lots haven't been drawn yet. So, so there's a lot of flexibility there. It just, it ends up being difficult to measure what the, the original assessed value is potentially and the current assessed value if you've got partial lots in the district.
I'm, I'm, sorry, I was just gonna, go ahead. I'm just wondering if we, if we set, for example, an omnibus Tiff for all of the property, but it's going to be developed over time, if we parcel out different stages or phases as different individual parcels? Does that make sense?
I'm not sure I follow what the question is.
Could we, we could set that, we could determine each phase could fall under a separate parcel. So we could have something that's being developed, let's say, short-term, one to three years, we could have a certain requirement in place for that. And then the next phase comes in, in three to five, it wouldn't kick in or it wouldn't start, or it would be a separate parcel, I guess, if you want.
So there, there are a bunch of different ways you can do that. You can create different Tiff districts.
Right.
Because then you could start a 30-year timeframe at different times to coincide with when development's actually going to occur. And that'll give you a little better idea of where to draw the boundaries if you wait a little bit longer. There, there are other options too. If you wanted to designate, you know, the whole area, including what Karen described in a downtown Tiff district, then the 30-year clock starts for everything. But if you were to enter into credit enhancement agreements with respect to certain parcels or chunks of parcels, you can do that over time. And the omnibus district also allows the town to say, "We are going to enter into credit enhancement agreements as we deem, you know, appropriate over the course of the term of the Tiff district, and we're not going to then have to go through the formal amendment process at the state level. We can, we're just going to handle that locally." And that's part of what the omnibus district is.
Right. And so an example of that is, like, the town of Cumberland has a business park that they really wanted to promote, and they have it set up that it's an automatic 50% Tiff if you locate here, but they'll do a separate credit enhancement agreement on a parcel-by-parcel basis.
Yes.
Is there, is there a way, as, as we look at these different structures, have you ever seen a Tiff that has some type of clawback provision? Meaning, in this particular case, I did some real estate development work, when the purchasers of this property bought it, they were pro-formers that probably said, "They project that even without a Tiff." And we actually asked them the question, "Do you want a Tiff to make this go?" They said, "No." So they've done the pro forma, they know what their numbers are. If we now do a Tiff where we are actually going to take taxpayers' dollars, reinvest it into infrastructure, which is going to enrich their return, and I understand they may want to do that because of cash flow issues, but can we recapture some of that value on the back end for taxpayers? Or does it all go to the developers' pockets?
So you're talking about a credit enhancement agreement where you're, you would somehow get the money paid back to you as a town?
Well, I mean, in this case, in this case, if we, if they have done a pro forma that assumes that they can carry the cost of the project and make a return, that's acceptable.
Yeah.
If we now enter a Tiff, we're going to use taxpayers' dollars. Taxpayers will be paying more in taxes during this whole period, 30 years, where the money goes into the development.
Yeah.
That's going to enrich the developers, or they're going to sell the project and it's going to enrich them. And where does it, can we return the value to taxpayers in some manner?
Yeah, I mean, I think the, part of the answer to that is, at the time a credit enhancement agreement is entered into, you have to weigh the costs and benefits for the taxpayers, for your community. So if at that time, you think they're gonna, that the overall development is going to be more successful, or is going to be successful at all by entering into this agreement, it may be the right thing to do because it can promote jobs, it can have a multiplier effect on businesses around it. But I think we are identifying a criticism of credit enhancement agreements generally, which is, you know, is this really the right choice? Are the taxpayers in the municipality getting enough benefit out of this contract, out of this reimbursement as they need to in order for us to say, "Yes, we want to do this deal"? Or do we just let them do their development?
To get the benefits, in that way.
Yeah. But, but in terms of, there, there are some things you can do in credit enhancement agreements to incentivize certain types of behavior. And it's not terribly common, but there are definitely a number of credit enhancement agreements that have conditions on the reimbursement. So there's a condition, perhaps, you know, by a certain year in the Tiff term, the developer needs to hit a certain assessed value, or increased assessed value. And then you know that you're going to have a financial benefit. And I don't think I've said this before, but you don't need to capture 100% of the increased assessed value. So in that-
Can you say that? What do you mean, you don't have to?
As a municipality, you could, you could decide, "We're only going to capture 50% of the increased assessed value," which means-
Shelter, shelter that?
Yeah, shelter, which means that 50% of the increased assessed value, the taxes paid on that will go to the Tiff fund, and 50% will go to the general fund. So it's, the theory of, of those sort of targets in credit enhancement agreements for value is if we get to $5 million of increased assessed value, that means the taxes paid on two and a half of it are going to go to the general fund, and we know we're going to get some public benefit out of that half. And the other half will be reimbursement to the developer for whatever infrastructure projects, or whatever you identify as the need to make the whole thing successful.
And are any of those corridors regulated, or is it just what you can negotiate with the developer?
It's, it's a contract negotiated, to be negotiated. So there are other Tiff districts that, right, that try to create targets for job creation and can condition the reimbursement on some of these things. A lot of those conditions can make it very difficult for the developers to use them to obtain financing, I'll just say that. I know they're very, they're very unpopular with developers, but, but they exist and they're options.
Right. So the, the state regulations don't require the town to, you know, put penalties in, but it is up to the municipalities to decide what to, what to put in that, in the contract. But I just want to get back to the original question, because it seemed like there were, there were two versions of your, of your question. If you're saying there's a company and they already, they don't need any assistance, they're not asking for anything, any credit enhancement agreement.
Right.
But we're going to come in and put in the public infrastructure.
Yeah.
So is that the, is, is that what you're also asking? There's no credit enhancement agreement, but we're publicly investing in the infrastructure?
Well, I mean, specifically in this case, in talking Scarborough Downs, and we sat here a month ago, I asked them if they assumed that they were going to get any Tiff monies from the community, and they said, "No." So they didn't assume, when they did the acquisition, the development plan, their purchase and development plan didn't depend on Tiff monies. Now we're at the table saying, "We want to use taxpayers' revenue to help them develop the property." And I want to understand what's in it for the taxpayers, that they, to trade off those revenues to help them develop, which adds to their end value of their project.
Right. Okay, I just want to make sure I understand, I, I understand there are two different questions.
If the project's going to go forward, there's no additional value to the town.
But there could be. If their project could go forward on a 25-year build-out scenario, the pro forma works, but we think, "Let's get there at 15." And what can we do? Is it our, it may be in our best interest to incentivize by way of credit enhancement agreement to get them quicker to the end.
Yeah, but that should be an analysis, we should be able to do.
Absolutely.
Because you might, you might limit the, the agreement to 15 years. So as soon as the agreement's over, the total value that's been developed goes on to the general fund.
Right.
And I guess it, it's important to note here that we're talking about value that doesn't exist today. Now, this, this is value that currently isn't in our tax base. Now, if there are impacts that come with development that have a cost to us, that's part of the conversation as well. But this is about future value that doesn't exist. And this, in the purest form, it would be the but-for argument, that we won't, we, we can't make this project happen but for this assistance.
But that's what they said. They said, "They could do it without our assistance." So the only value to us would be, if this makes it go faster, can we get enough value from that?
Faster, or they do something that we want that they don't really have to, that they didn't need to do in their development plan. So there's a bunch, there's a-
And the shelter piece, no, it has the benefits to us as well.
Several different types of pieces. And, and that's one of the reasons I'm trying not to get too far ahead. They, they need to tell, whoever comes forward, they need to tell us what they want and why they want it. That's fundamental. And then that's when our analysis starts, what, what's in it for us and how do we benefit?
Shannon, the three types, the economic development Tiff has to be one of those three?
No, no. You can have just sort of the standard economic development-
So these are only the specialty ones, under the economic development?
Exactly.
And are these kind of, how popular or common are these? Are we sort of off, sort of over here talking about stuff that's probably not likely to happen? Or are these mainstream, the most popular ways in which it goes?
So there, there are many more Tiff districts that don't fall in these categories than do, because you can only have one downtown district in any municipality. And transit-oriented districts are relatively recent, and just investment in transit is not terribly popular in certain parts of the state anyway. So, but, there are a lot of municipalities taking advantage of the, of those two types. And omnibus districts are also increasing in popularity, just simply because there are more districts that are area-wide, that encompass more than one parcel.
So there's maybe advantages to these as opposed to a general economic development Tiff that would gravitate you towards using one of these?
The cap limits don't exist in certain cases, so yeah, that, you're making good reasons.
So you might be able to make the case.
Right. And the downtown has a little bit more flexibility on a couple of issues.
Yeah, so, so that's a good point, Karen. I'm happy to talk about, there is an additional advantage of a downtown Tiff district that is fairly limited, but to the extent you have Tiff districts that are not your downtown district, but you can make an argument, the statutory language is that that development in those other districts is somehow detrimental to the focus on economic development in the downtown district. There's some adverse impact that needs to be mitigated. That there are occasions where you can use Tiff revenue from another Tiff district to support the development program project costs of your downtown Tiff district. And it's limited, but it exists, and there are some municipalities that are using that to a tremendous advantage because they've got development that's really significant in some outlying Tiff district. And their downtown hasn't really generated a whole lot of increased assessed value, but that's where they have all the investment that they want to do. So that's something to consider. I think also, we thought it was important to highlight it just because you don't have a downtown Tiff district, and so it's, it's certainly still an option for you, and you're talking about a lot of potential development over time here, and that can, over time, create a problem for your, your acreage cap and your value cap.
Now, let's not get caught up in all the unique specialty details. And it just occurred to me, implicit in my mind, but maybe not obvious to everyone, we shouldn't ever even be talking, having this conversation if it doesn't first and foremost make sense to us. It obviously makes sense to the private developer.
Right.
And so that's the first question we need to ask ourselves and answer before we go, go past it. So I see heads nodding, so I guess you do get that point.
Okay. I won't spend much time on this, because I think, I think this will help the most affordable housing districts in my town. So credit enhancement agreements, we've talked about this. I mean, it's worth making the point, following from a recent conversation, that you may decide to enter in, to designate a Tiff district where there is no contemplative credit enhancement agreement, and you're really creating a vehicle to invest in certain economic development projects through the increased assessed value of a particular area. And so I just thought it was worth highlighting that while there are almost 500 Tiff districts in the state of Maine, only about half of those districts even have a credit enhancement agreement associated with it, which is often surprising to people. But a lot of the work I do is for municipalities who are creating Tiff districts that are meant to fund their own infrastructure. They see a development coming in and they want to finance or fund a certain project or a set of projects that happen to meet the statutory requirements of project costs. Any questions about that?
Why, why do people have credit enhancement agreements as a part of their Tiff?
If they have a developer that comes forward with a proposal, and they make some compelling argument that it's better for the town to incentivize that development to happen, to, as Karen said, perhaps get something out of that development they wouldn't otherwise get that's benefiting to the community, or making a development happen faster, there's a lot of benefits that could come to a municipality from agreeing to provide reimbursement on property taxes over time.
Yeah, the other part of the question is, why do half the Tiffs don't have credit enhancement? It's because there are significant shelter, tax shelter benefits, and also a way to designate future tax revenue that doesn't exist today toward qualified programs, whether it's infrastructure, economic development initiatives. And so that's done unilaterally, without the involvement or even the knowledge of sometimes of the developer. It happens, we choose to do that for our own reasons, not for theirs.
Right. The other piece that's important to know is, you can have a Tiff without a credit enhancement agreement, but you cannot have a credit enhancement agreement without a Tiff. The Tiff sets the structure of why you're investing in this property to begin with, and here are all the things that you expect to happen. So you can't have one without the other.
So the deal with the developer is the credit enhancement agreement?
Correct, correct. And sometimes it's that, you know, we may, there may be a piece of, of public infrastructure that we want them to pay for, that's not really on their side, but let them pay for it, and we'll pay them back through the credit enhancement agreement.
Good.
So now, I was going to move into how Tiff revenues can be spent under the Tiff statute. And they're really, the statute breaks the project costs up into three categories. One is the project costs that are located inside the Tiff district. So if you draw your Tiff district around an area, the capital costs that are inside that Tiff district are pretty easy to get approved as an approvable project cost in your development program. The, the second category are project costs that are outside the Tiff district but are quote "directly related to or made necessary by" the Tiff district. So the idea here is even if you don't include in your Tiff district area the intersection that needs a major improvement, but that intersection improvement is required because of the development that's in the district, that intersection improvement will qualify as a project cost.
Yeah, another example is upgrading pump stations, you know, downstream where the project, it's not in the area, but the development and the flow that comes from it requires upgrades of the system down below.
Are there any, like, geographical limits? Does it have to be adjacent, or could it be anywhere in town that it-
It's going to be directly related or made necessary by, as the standard-
Right, but let's say, so let's say, again, using Scarborough Downs as an example, if we need to upgrade an intersection at Payne Road and, you know, farther down Payne Road towards the mall because of the increased traffic flow-
Sure.
-that, that would count, it doesn't need to be adjacent to or within a certain-
No, it could be justified, it could be across town. If there are demonstrable impacts that can be tied to that project, I think you could make a call for it.
It sounds like these have to be approved by the state?
Yeah, so this is the process where they, they have the final say on whether we meet the statute, whether our development program, project list meets the statute. So the process in effect is, as we're developing that list, if we're moving forward with a hypothetical development program, we're going to, I'm going to make sure that the state is on board with anything that might be on the edges of whether it meets directly related to or made necessary by. I think the- I think the proximity question, as you get farther away, it gets a little harder to make that case potentially, but you certainly can.
So this is an ongoing process? The TIF might say, we need a pumping station down the road, and so we want to, and so we would go to the state. The state would either say yea or nay?
No, it's not an ongoing process in that way. At the time the town approves, the, designates the district and adopts the development program, inside the development program will be a project list. And that project list will need to be comprehensive. I try to describe those projects as broadly as I can because it's very hard to predict all the things that you might want to do with the TIF revenues. But the state is going to have some restrictions about how specific you are in that project list.
How about number three?
Yeah, so there is a third category, and it's often surprising what falls into it. But project costs, they are unrelated to the location of the TIF district. It's not totally unlimited. There, there are subsections of that section of the statute that outline what could go in it. And, you know, there are a few examples are environmental improvements that are made necessary by or are related to economic development in the municipality. So you can put a TIF district in place and have some environmental project the town has to undertake in a completely different area of your town. But if you can make the case that that environmental improvement is necessary to facilitate development or to deal with the effects of development, then you can have that be part of your development program project list. Does that make sense? Some of the other things in that category include, you know, funding your economic development staff, funding programs you might have for your business community. A lot of sort of general economic development program costs are included there. Transit costs are also included in that category. So, so some of the transit costs don't have to be, they're directly related to the TIF district boundaries. I can talk about some other things as well. There's childcare costs, it's a very seldom used option in this category. Skills development and job training programs are in this category. Also revolving loan funds for businesses. There are some municipalities that have revolving loan funds, investment funds, or grants for local businesses that are funded through, yes.
So Karen will like this because we've talked about it. So does that mean if we wanted to fund an economic development loan program for micro businesses, we could actually include that as part of something like the supplemental economic fund?
That's right.
And that could be completely unrelated to the original project.
That's right. It can come from any TIF district, anywhere in the, in the town. So, yeah. There is a limit.
More provisions.
There's a provision of the statute that talks about sort of the limits here. And that the goal is really not to fund your general governmental core things through a TIF district. And so there's an exception. You can't fund your town hall, your, your jails, recreation centers, athletic centers, swimming pools. There's, there are some things we'll have to address there based on what your goals might be. But, but it's useful to know that.
Can that be part, that can't be part of a credit enhancement agreement?
Nope, not even through a credit enhancement agreement. So, so credit enhancement agreement, actually, the, the first category of those three projects, project cost categories is project costs that are located inside the TIF district. Credit enhancement agreements generally fit in that category because you're reimbursing future property taxes to the developer of the capital, capital building, I mean, the building itself. So not municipal capital, but the private capital improvement is being funded through the TIF and the credit enhancement agreement. So that's sort of how those qualify. It doesn't relate to those items.
A lot of people at home watching that and signing because of that last bullet.
Some people sitting at this table are signing because of that last bullet.
Just a, a little footnote, I will mention, many of these are kind of so-called loopholes that have been closed up over the years. I believe Scarborough, this building that we're sitting in is, was the last town hall that was funded. It was the now defunct Town Center TIF that encompassed Oak Hill area. And at the time, it was allowed through the TIF statute. And so a portion of this building was funded through, through the TIF program. And they quickly closed that loophole back in 91 or two.
Shannon, I don't see fire departments or police departments up there.
Yeah, so, so in the second category where I said made necessary by or directly related to, there are some public safety improvements and investments that can be funded through TIF revenues if that development is creating the need for those improvements or investments. And so, you know, additional fire truck or a ladder truck instead of a regular truck, those kinds of things can be, even a portion of the costs of a new fire station at times qualifies.
Can schools be funded?
Schools are not, yeah, unfortunately, that's not an option. However, in the affordable housing TIF statute, there is a provision for that, given that affordable housing projects usually encompass additional burn on schools, but.
Shannon, there is that one small loophole on leasing within the downtown?
Yes, um, yes.
I don't think she wanted you to mention.
Oh, sorry, that. Man, we didn't get our story straight before.
We're clearly aware of community interest and needs, and we're scouring the statute to find creative ways to perhaps advance some of those ideas. And it's going to be exceedingly difficult, but it's worth pursuing. So I think it's premature to answer that question, but there's some angles we're pursuing.
Good.
Just for, for background, the provision actually that Karen's referring to, and it's, and I don't know of any actual use in real time, in real life of this, but it's the cost of facilities leased by state government or municipal government that are located in downtown TIF districts. There had to have been some specific reason that particular provision is in there, an option is in there. But I don't, I'm not aware of what it is. And so that's one of the things we'll, we'll keep pressing on investigating. So, next slide is just about how you might fund project costs. So if you're thinking about an, an infrastructure improvement, how might you fund it practically speaking? So one of the ways is through a credit enhancement agreement where the developer actually undertakes the improvement itself. Undertakes the project to improve the intersection or whatever it may be. And then over time, the town agrees to reimburse for those costs through a credit enhancement agreement. Another option is through municipal bonds. So you can issue a municipal bond to pay for an infrastructure improvement. And simply, rather than using your general fund dollars to make those debt service payments, you use your TIF funds as they're available to repay the debt service. And then just setting aside TIF revenues over time in your TIF fund, then you are able to apply those on, as they're available to capital improvements.
Thinking of these options, this council will recall the property on Running Hill Road on the other side of Route 95. It, it requires public sewer to, to be developed in any significant way. That's a huge cost. It's a three or four million dollar cost, the number escapes me, which the owner of some, most of the property has indicated that's a, that's more than he can bear. So there's, you know, there's any number of ways to, to do that. You could pay for it yourselves and pay back with TIF revenues, or I always prefer using their money and letting them assume the risk. And depending on performance of the, of the TIF area, they get their money. So that's, that's the preferable approach from my perspective is to let the developer make the investment and agree to reimburse them over time.
So now, the, the last topic I'm going to address, and then Karen will get to talk about the existing districts in Scarborough, is the tax shift benefit. And I know a number of you are familiar with this, so bear with me as I review it because I think it helps to just frame it every time. But the tax shift benefit is based on the way in which state education subsidy, county taxes, and revenue sharing subsidies are calculated at the state level. And those formulas are all based, at least in part, on every municipality's state valuation. The state valuation is the equalized total assessed value in a municipality. So it's a little bit old because the, the equalization process at the state takes a couple of years to make sure that all the municipalities are assessing real estate. It's sort of different assessment ratios, but they need a little bit of time to make sure everyone's state valuation is, is comparable and, and that they can base those calculations of subsidies and county taxes on something that can be compared across municipalities. But it's your total value in your municipality is supposed to drive how much subsidy you receive and how much county tax you pay. The theory being that as you have more value in your municipality, you should be able to pay more for the education of kids in Scarborough than you otherwise would. And everything else as well, based on revenue sharing subsidies, and you can pay more in county tax. That's the, the theory of each of those formulas. So what I like to, how I like to talk about tax shift benefit, don't get excited by this slide. If the town is not a minimum receiver, which you are. But, but I run these calculations for every municipality who's interested in, in learning about this because at a given point, there are a bunch of other things that go into those formulas too. So for every new tax dollar you receive in Scarborough from a new development, there's some percentage of that tax dollar that's going to be lost to these tax shifts. You don't get the full benefit of, of new tax revenue because you're going to lose subsidy and have to pay more county tax. I usually run these calculations based on your state aid to education impact, your county tax impact, and your revenue sharing impact. And in Scarborough, if you were to not be considered a minimum receiver, obviously your education impact is significant. That means, that means that for every new tax dollar that's paid on new development, that in fact, 49.9% according to the current formulas is lost to state aid to education reduction. Now, let's just talk to, I mean, you may all know exactly what minimum receiver status means, but essentially if you are not, you have to receive, according to state law, a minimum amount of subsidy in relation to your special education costs as they define them. So if you are already having a bump up in your subsidy because of your high special education costs in comparison to what your subsidy otherwise would be, you're considered a minimum receiver. Therefore, there is no tax shift impact based on your valuation any longer. And that's what we're seeing here in Scarborough. It's relatively recent that that's been the case. And I know that some folks feel like that's probably going to be your world you live in for a long time. In which case, this, next slide is a more realistic representation of the tax shift in Scarborough. Now, how this impacts TIFs is worth just playing all the way through. Capture increased assessed value, capture value in a TIF district is invisible to the state valuation. Therefore, for TIF revenue, you enjoy the full dollar. You don't enjoy only 95, 4.5% of it. So there is a financial incentive for municipalities to pay for project costs that they know they would otherwise pay for out of their general fund through a TIF. And that's an important concept to understand. And Scarborough is a little unique because you've got this minimum receiver issue. And, and the lion's share, obviously, of this impact is for education subsidy costs. Any questions about that?
How important is this factor to municipalities that are not minimum receivers to enter into a TIF agreement?
So to enter into a TIF or to do a TIF district on its own without a, I mean, a credit enhancement agreement or a municipal TIF with no credit enhancement agreement is hugely important. I give this talk, as I said, to municipalities all over the state, and there's this light bulb moment when they realize the financial impact of these things. And they realize, hey, you know what? We're investing in economic development right now. We're doing it through a general fund. We should be doing it through a TIF district and taking advantage of this program the way other communities are. So that, that's definitely what I see, it's really a huge factor.
An example, you know, would be New Gloucester, when Pine Land first came on board and was going to develop, the developers of Pine Land wanted nothing to do with a TIF, but the town wanted to do it to protect all that new value that was going to come online and to really do the, the tax shift. So that's why they did that.
Yeah, and in Scarborough's case, you know, I've often said, we're a victim of our own success. You know, our development growth, certainly relative to almost every other community in the state, is, is really astounding. And you see, we've been on the losing end of that, getting at best half of the new dollar. And I guess the worst part of that is propelling us toward minimum receivership.
Incidentally, New Gloucester is amending that district right now in order to help them fund a portion of the cost of their new public works facility, which will serve Pine Land.
So, so is it fair to say then that the, the TIF is really set up for the, the, the idea of the town's benefit, but a credit enhancement agreement would be, would be more towards the, with the eye towards the developer side of it? So we could do a TIF whether, whether we use credit enhancement agreements for development or not?
But I think there are some credit enhancement agreements that definitely benefit the town as well.
Oh, I'm not saying that. I'm just, I'm just saying, you know, I think when most people hear the word TIF, they think immediately it's payback to a developer. And I, I just want to make sure I understand a TIF could be structured to be a, a very large benefit for the town without anything to do with a developer.
Exactly.
In fact, half of them in existence, that's exactly the case.
Okay.
So I'm going to turn things over to Karen.
Okay. Tom, would you mind starting there? There are two sets of fact sheets here that give you some of the details of the existing TIFs. And I'm going to try to go through a couple of highlights.
We have 10 minutes.
Okay, I'm going to go quickly through some highlights.
Well, just, we need a little time to switch over.
And I'm, and I can continue to answer questions if anybody has any about the, the specific TIFs. But let's see if we can at least give some highlights of where we are. So from an economic development TIF standpoint, we have three TIFs right now. One of them is for Enterprise Business Park. One of them is for the BOR, it's called the BOR slash Elevation Center. Some people think of it as Foundation Center, which I think is ultimately what they originally called it. And then there's the Hygus Parkway. So in all three of those TIFs, we do have a credit enhancement agreement. It's only in the Hygus Parkway, Ted.
I'm sorry, where, where is the BOR?
That is right, that's where, Science Park Road, it's the former Conica Building.
Oh, okay.
Post Women's Health, yeah, yes. So BOR is just the name of the zone, that just happened to be in the official submission. So trying to stay true to that. So again, there are three different TIFs and they all look very different. Enterprise Business Park is 83 acres. The Elevation Center is very specific. It's, it's only the six acres of the actual site. And that TIF actually is for redevelopment. So there was an existing building, whereas Enterprise Business Park and Hygus Parkway are really, that's all new development that's going to happen. So Hygus Parkway, 375 acres are actually contained in the TIF that was approved by the state. Again, they are all running, Enterprise Business Park runs to 2022. Elevation Center runs to 2025, that's the newest one. And then Hygus Parkway runs to 2028. And so let's take a look at Enterprise Business Park first off. Again, there is a credit enhancement agreement. It was for public improvements, and I think I list them more specifically in the, in the fact sheets there. There's no separate public program. So the only thing we're doing is reimbursing the developer for some of the public improvements. The original obligation in that TIF is 1.5 million. To date, we've reimbursed 1.32 million. So there's a balance of about $179,000. Based on where they are now and how much value has been created, you know, I, we're estimating, based on 2018, that we would be done in fiscal year 2020. In this TIF, there was some variation in the early parts of the TIF about how much was going to the credit enhancement agreement versus how much was going to be retained by the general fund. But at this point, we are at 50/50 split. But at this point, we are at 50/50 split. So the new value that was created was 12.8 million to date. The taxes generated from that are split, 50% going towards paying back the credit enhancement agreement, 50% going back into the general fund. So, and that's because, again, we didn't have a separate public improvement program. We only had the credit enhancement agreement. And again, we did try to look back to see what has happened in these TIF districts, and my estimate going through business by business is we're somewhere around 200 new jobs, and there's still a great deal of potential build-out available at the Enterprise Business On Elevation Center, again, there was a credit enhancement agreement specifically for some infrastructure improvements, and I believe I've got them listed there. They rebuilt Science Park Road. They did a few other types of, of infrastructure investments. We agreed to reimburse them $559,000. To date, we've reimbursed about $150,000. So we've got a balance of $400,000, ordered 9,000. It's to be completed in fiscal year 2025. At this point, and none of the, it's at 100%, so 100% of the taxes generated are going to pay for the credit enhancement agreement. The captured value so far, the net new value that's been created is 1.5 million. There's been about 150 jobs estimated that have, that have resulted as investment in this property. So the one thing that I think, you know, Tom pointed out is we probably are, if you just kept that value at where we were in 2018, by the end of this TIF, we won't be paying out the full $409,000. And that's, you know, that's something that, you know, we can certainly look at, but that's the risk that, that the developer took as well.
Just let me point out, I do recall this very specifically. This project came forward in 2011, really in the depths of the recession.
Absolutely.
And I know the council at the time was very excited to see anyone willing to undertake a project of this size, and particularly a redevelopment of a building that was in-
Making for three years.
-in great need. So there was some kind of compelling public benefit to offer some assistance, and I think this is truly a case where this project would not have gone forward but for our assistance.
So if I can understand it correctly, that you say the balance of 409, is that existing funds or is that what needs, still needs to be paid in?
To satisfy, that's to satisfy the assumed full payout. But it's underperforming and at this point, won't ever be able to fully perform.
But my point is, there's not 409 sitting in an account somewhere in a TIF that comes back? I just wanted to be clear.
No. And, and just, you know, again, a reminder that nothing gets paid out until it's paid in. So if the value doesn't get created, and the land hasn't generated that, the taxes, and the developer hasn't paid the taxes, nothing, nothing goes down.
Right, so the, the TIF creates value, it generates taxes, the tax money goes into a fund, and then under the credit enhancement agreement, the fund will pay out to the developer monies as they're available.
Exactly.
And so far, we've paid out $150,000.
Correct.
And given that we've only gotten a $1.5 million increase in assessed value, the captured value, it really does look like that's 20 grand, a tax rate of 15 whatever.
Right.
So you're, it's going to be, you're never going to get there by 2025. What happens at the end of 2025?
If the, the TIF goes away.
Yeah.
Unless there's some amendment or, you know, there are a lot of things that you can, you can decide to change, but technically, at this point, it, it ends and those revenues come back to the general fund.
So it was structured as a cap, not, I mean, certainly when that was entered into, it was the developer's hope and expectation that they would get to the, to the full $559,000 in reimbursement funds. But the way the contract is written, it's a cap on the total amount of reimbursement. So if they had done, if there had been more captured value generated and you reached that 559 by this date, there would have been an automatic termination of the reimbursement side of the credit enhancement agreement. So in this case, what will happen instead is in 2025, the, or whenever the, the term of the credit enhancement agreement is done and the credit, and the TIF district expires, they will not have reached 559, and the town's obligation is gone at whatever amount they received by that time.
So a credit enhancement agreement cannot exceed the duration of the TIF?
Correct.
Correct.
But is the industry, if, if for whatever reason they were to rapidly catch up and have paid off, you know, we were to reimburse them the full 409 remaining in 2020, let's say, would then the TIF district end, or is it just the credit enhancement agreement that goes away?
Well, in this case-
Right, two, two ways. One, you can end the TIF district, or you could amend the, the program if you had other expenses or other things that you wanted to do within that, that district. This being a specific property, that's probably not going to happen, but-
I mean, under the documents as they are now, unless the council were to decide to amend it, the district would terminate along with the credit enhancement agreement.
But that's dependent on how the, how it was written.
Right, right. Yeah, so, you know, at any point in time, you can amend a district as something comes up. You want to add more, there are other items that the town has decided is important to them, and they want to amend the, the program, the development program that you originally filed. That can be amended at any time.
So this actually caused me to ask a question about the previous, so I apologize for both of you.
Sure.
This is obviously completely built up. The potential growth on, on the Enterprise Park, does that 35% include the approved residential piece at the end of the park, or does it exclude it?
It, that's not built, so there's-
Even though it's been approved to be built, it doesn't include it?
Well, it, it includes the territory, but there's no value there yet.
Okay.
So-
Well, this is potentially built up.
There's significant potential value yet to be delivered by Enterprise Business Park. There's a lot of growth, there's a lot of growth potential there. All right. So let's go back to the Higginson Parkway. So this is the-
Save the easy one.
I'm sorry, what?
I saved the easy one for last.
I did. I wanted to get to the easy ones. So Higginson Parkway has both a program of public investment that the municipality undertook, and then it's got a separate credit enhancement agreement that is for a subsection of the TIF, a subsection of the geographic area. So under the public development program, which basically, to simplify it, it's all areas of the Higginson Parkway except for what we know as Gateway Shops and then the new-
Gateway Commons.
The Gateway Commons, and it was formerly known as Gateway Square. So those two pieces of property are really what the subject of the credit enhancement agreement is. So under the public section of the TIF, the public program, they, we've captured about $9.1 million, and that would include things like Horizon Solutions, the salt pump climbing company, those types of developments are captured under this TIF. And the revenues to date is just under $1 million. We've been generating in 2018, $151,000 a year. So yes, that's less than what I think the original TIF anticipated.
So we, if I understand, on the public development side, we invested as a town upfront in that infrastructure extension. What was the value of that investment?
I believe that was about 8 million for the principal of the investment.
Yeah. I think it was a little more than that, and essentially, half of that investment was intended to be captured through this vehicle.
Okay.
We also have sewer assessments that apply on a front-foot basis to those properties on Higginson Parkway, which is also intended to cover that debt service.
So if we, if this TIF were to expire, the public development program would also expire with it. So it would be, if we wanted to continue to retry and recapture that 4 million that we wanted through this program, we would be in our best interest to extend, to extend that TIF, correct?
Right. I don't think we have many more years. I think we're at 25, I have to go back.
Yeah.
A few more years.
No, that's fine.
Yeah. Right. So then on the credit enhancement agreement side, the stated purpose in the credit enhancement agreement really was to offset some development costs for Gateway Square and Gateway Shops. Part of that was some investment in the infrastructure, but the credit enhancement agreement was broad in terms of what the money could be spent for. The original obligation capped out at 8.25 million over the life of the TIF. It also has an annual cap of $825,000. So if this property, subject to the credit enhancement agreement, generates more than $850,000 on a yearly basis, that's capped by the municipality. So 825,000 annual cap, 8.25 million in total revenues promised. The amount paid to date is 4.76 million, so that leaves us around $3.48 million left on this TIF. The amount that was reimbursed in 2018 was just under 500,000, and I think that fluctuates a little on a year-to-year basis, but in 2018, it was 500,000, or 492 if you want to be specific. So in the captured value, or the new value generated, right now, under this TIF, it was $29 million of new value. So if we base this on what was generated in 2018, we would be completed with this in seven years. We do anticipate that there's new value coming online with the apartments that are going in. That should significantly, or hopefully noticeably, reduce the number of years required because new value is going to be generated. So that is the-
And those are, that's bonded money that we put out?
Yes, for the-
For the infrastructure?
For the infrastructure.
For both public development program and the New England Expedition?
No, we didn't bond anything for New England Expedition. That's on them.
It's the private investment that we're reimbursing them for.
Okay.
Right, right.
Okay.
So I think, you know, this is a lightly, a light overview of what these, the TIFs have done. I think the important piece here is they're extremely flexible tools, and it's about us using them to benefit the town in a very strategic way.
Do you know, firsthand, how many affordable housing TIF districts we have? Is it just South Gate or do you also?
Just South.
It's not Betsy Hollins as well?
Yes, there's a comment.
There's two. Yes, the two.
And we have another one that's no longer relevant.
Right.
Other questions to Karen?
Very good.
Thank you.
Both of you, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm happy to answer-
I actually understood like-
Yeah.
I tried to give you more information on the fact sheets. I'm happy to answer any questions at any time, because it is, believe me, I've looked through these documents a number of times. It's complicated.
Thanks. We'll reconvene in about two minutes.
Can we?
But you can fly.
Bathroom break.
My daughter's 26 years old. I have a question.